As I said earlier in the work session, I hope everybody has had a great summer. It's good to be back. I said I feel like I just got on a new bike and I'm not quite used to the brakes or the pedals. So it's gonna be a fun day. Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting, August 14th, 2024. And if you will stand, I will call this meeting to order. If you'll stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, please. Okay, thank you. We will start with an approval of the agenda. If somebody would like to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, we have consent agenda. We have two sets of minutes. We have our minutes from May 1st, 2024, from the district board meeting, our minutes of June 12th, 2024, from the district board retreat. And I would ask for a motion to approve. So approved, that's written. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll double check if there's any public comment. No? Great. We will continue to move on. We have presentations from our guests. And first up, we have Excellence at Ames with Shannon McCaslin, Dean of Students.
Below 12 days till fall semester. As everybody's like, oh, don't tell us the number of days. And I have the privilege to introduce you to yet another all-in student. You'll soon agree with me on that when you hear from Brian Burnell. Brian comes to us after having jobs, and I don't say career. He used the word job. Jobs in IT and at Amazon. Five surgeries later, because that's what that work does to your body, he came to Ames to, in his words, start over. And so Brian started classes here just in January of this year. As you see on the screen, or maybe you'll see on the screen or in your packet, you'll see that he's already gotten quite involved on the campus. He's a peer mentor in the Ames to UNC program and works with students to ease their transition to Ames in much the same way he, or Ames to UNC, their transition to UNC, in much the same way he has transitioned to our place. And I can see this silver thread rolling, as I get to know Brian, that he works, his goal and aim in life is to ease transitions for people. And so, of course, he is going into the human services area at UNC, looking to change the system in social work and possibly child protective services and some of those places. And so I'm pleased to introduce you to Brian. I'm gonna let him tell you the rest of the story.
Thank you, Shannon. Hello, my name is Brian Burnell, freshman here at Ames Community College. I just started in the summer, or spring of 2023, or 24. And I just wanted to give you a little background of myself. So after high school, I decided that I was gonna stay home and help my parents because they were going through some injuries themselves, so they weren't able to work. So I stayed home, working, helped pay the bills, and that was my goal in life, is to help my family. As I got older, they were able to get back to work, and I transitioned from Idaho back to Colorado. Doing that, I started off career with R. N. R. Dongley at a printing company, changed different jobs, because that's all they were, was jobs, to keep me going, to survive, to make it through life. Didn't really think that I had a chance to have a education on my background. As I got older, the things that happened is I hurt myself on the job. Had to move away from that. After a couple of years from that first surgery, I had two more surgeries on the same ankle and decided that I needed to do something different. So I went to another job with Boulder County for a few years where I was doing insulation. Hurt my back, so had a couple more surgeries. So I decided to go to school for IT. So I started at Front Range for a couple of years in 2012. Decided that I need to make a little bit more money while going to school, so I found an IT job. They paid okay, so I decided that I was gonna continue that way without finishing my education. A few years passed, things had changed, wasn't happy with that career, so again, changed jobs again. Went to Amazon for a little over a year. Amazon was definitely an eye-opener on where I was and where I wanted to be. I did have surgery on my neck, and that was the last straw. I didn't want to do that kind of work again. So that left me making a choice. Am I gonna continue my education so I can do something that I really want to do? Or do I want to go back to injuring myself and possibly not feeling good the rest of my life? So in the process of deciding, talked to my wife and my kids, and we decided my new job is now going to school. So here I am, working in the Ames to UNC program in the transition center as a peer-to-peer mentor. I'm really enjoying that. I love being able to help students see their potential and assist them on their way to, you know, help them with their careers and their future. Let me go back just a little bit. So me and my wife, during my first injuries with my ankles, we decided that we were gonna do foster care. So we did foster care, a little girl, her name was Isabel, and we decided that we wanted to adopt her. In that transition, she went home to her biological parent and then found out that my nephews, my biological nephews were in foster care. So me and my wife spent a whole summer driving back and forth to Grand Junction to get involved with that. At the end of September, we were able to bring those three boys home. In the meantime, Isabel was with her biological parent. We did start seeing more of her, and pretty soon, we landed up able to bring her back to our home. So we did adopt all four of our children, and that's one of my biggest highlights. Another of my highlights is my wife, Lisa. We've been married for 23 years. And she is the true love of my life. So without their support, I would not be here today. So with that said, I'm also a part of LULAC here at Ames and with the city of Greeley. So did not expect to transition into that role with LULAC here at Ames, but it was an easy transition. The group was very welcoming and allowed me to come to the group with open arms. Being a non-traditional student was a little hard and difficult at first to think, you know, how can somebody accept me into this group where there's a lot of young adults that may not have the same, I guess, goals. But as I get to know these young students, they definitely have great goals, and I feel like a dad to this group. I definitely have kind of called them like my LULAC children. I have become the vice president of LULAC here at Ames, and with collaboration with Greeley-LULAC, I see big things happening for this group. But I do plan on going to UNC from here. I do want to work somewhere in the human services roles because I definitely find that there is a need for a lot of people to get help. Sometimes people just don't know where to look, and I want to be able to help them out with that. So with that said, thank you again for having me here today. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to continuing my education here at Ames.
On behalf of the trustees, we want to congratulate Brian for putting himself into being a wonderful aardvark. But what's really obvious to each of us is that you have a servant's heart, and it doesn't matter if it was your parents or whomever it is. You know, we can't teach that. That's something that you come with, and that makes you special and sets you apart. And we greatly appreciate it, and we know that great things are in front of you. So congratulations, Brian.
Thank you, Trustee Hayfley. Thank you, Brian and Shannon. Well done. We'll move into our representatives to the board, and we'll start off with Ryan Maeda, Ames Faculty Association.
Chair Shaw, trustees, guests, members, thanks for having me here today. As Shannon said, we have 12 days left. From a faculty standpoint, we are not ready. But we will be ready. Give us a few days. We do have new faculty who are currently going through their new faculty orientation as we speak. They're over there getting their crash course of everything Ames and throwing at them everything that we can to hopefully get as much to stick as possible. And then all of our full-time faculty will report back on Monday. And so we are, we are in all hands on deck, and there's a lot of new stuff coming along, and we're really excited for this next year. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out on your guys' report. Just the team that I wanted to highlight this month was our welding technology. If you guys read the faculty, our faculty report, over 900 hours that they did in professional development just in this last year alone, and they have another 400 that they're doing pending, actually, right now they're doing some of it. And so almost 1,200 hours of continuing ed for that department alone just to continue to bring the highest level and the highest standard of programs and services that we can to our students. So really, really proud of our welding team and just want to appreciate Cody's leadership over there and what a great team he's put together. Yesterday, actually, it came to my attention. And so the person that I'm gonna highlight today is somebody from our agriculture, science, and technology department. I'd like just to give a shout out to, she's one of our part-time faculty over in the ag sciences, Tammy Schneider. She teaches the bulk of our Ames animal science classes. She started her career here in 2022, but she's been teaching vet tech courses for many years at the Bell Ray Institute in Denver. Tammy also helps to advise the Ames Ag Club and coach the ag judging teams for Ames, both through the AVMA, which is their animal welfare, and the NACTA contests. In her spare time, she also likes to participate in roller derby across the United States. And she takes advantage of every time that there's an opportunity for her to do more professional development. That's where you can find her. But the thing I want to highlight about Tammy right now is I know that we're looking at the start time for our vet tech program, and she by far is gonna be one of the leads. She was just recently named into the inaugural class of the Associates Veterinary Tech Educator Fellows. So the first class nationally, it's a national recognition that one of our very faculty, who should be spearheading that program, is a part of. So huge thing. It helps to recognize extraordinary leadership, innovation, and mentorship contributions. This designation acknowledges those who have gone above and beyond their commitment to the next generation of vet techs. The inaugural class of fellowships was officially inducted just recently in the 2024 Annual Conference in Houston, Texas, which Tammy was attending, marking a significant milestone in her professional journey. The newly-named fellows have undergone a rigorous self-study showcasing both their dedication to their shared mission, to the students and the communities that they serve. So super, super proud of Tammy Schneider and the ag department. Just wanted to give her a little shout out and just, once again, highlight some of the great things that we're doing as faculty. So you guys are fully confident at all times that the faculty that are teaching here and teaching our students here at Ames are of the highest caliber, and we continue to push forward with all of our continuing ed and development and stuff like that. We're, don't let moss grow under our feet, for sure. So that's what I have for faculty. Any questions? Anything from the board? Awesome. Well, thank you guys for your time today.
Thanks, Ryan. Next up, we have David Mont, Ames Staff Association.
Afternoon, Ames. Thank you, Chair Shaw, trustees, Dr. Rothmer, cabinet, colleagues, and friends. 494. That was the number, you may remember, that was presented to you in the November board meeting, representing or indicating the total number of full-time and part-time staff that the college employed at that time. And that number indicates who I and who ASA represent for the college. The ASA is incorporated under Policy 1-302, and we have bylaws and a procedure and charter and all of that. So I could, you know, pull some of that out and read that to you, but then everyone would fall asleep. So as I've been now transitioning into this new role as the newly-elected president of ASA, I think I've got actually a pretty good grasp of what ASA is about, and I can summarize it in two words, and it is, make sure I get them right, communication and collision. And so those two words, communication and collision, are gonna inform the time that we spend together on future meetings, and it really informs a lot of what we do as an ASA team and as the staff in general. So I wanted to start with recognizing and thanking Ross Perkins for the work that he's done the last two years as ASA president. He's just done so much good work, and everything from furthering the communication, taking communication from ASA leadership to ASA general to a whole new level, and then all this leadership behind the scenes and with meetings and everything else. So I really want to thank Ross for that. And if I could, now I'd like to tell my Ames story, if I can, and it's gonna be condensing 20 years into about 90 seconds. So I'm gonna do the best I can. We'll see how that goes. So I first stepped on campus as an Ames student in January of 2005. And I started as a welding student. If you guys remember the American Chopper Show on Discovery Channel, I loved that show, and so I was inspired. I want to come be a fabricator. Well, at that time, I took classes for, I think, a year, year and a half. I ended up not completing the program. My life was a mess. And so I dropped out. Several years later, fast forward, I actually had a religious conversion, a spiritual awakening, and gave my life to Christ, and that completely radically changed my life. So fast forward a couple of years from that, I had met through my church the woman, the young lady, who eventually became my wife, and decided it was time for me to go back, come back to school and try again. So I did this time, and I, this time I entered the Engineering Tech CAD program with John Lenz, John Mangan, and Dale Blandon. And I really appreciate the mentorship those guys gave me over those years, and so I did end up completing that degree in 2010. Fast forward a few more years from that, sorry, I was working in construction back then at the time. I decided at that time just to stay in the field where I was working. But actually, just like Brian mentioned, that can be hard. That's some hard work, and so it was hard on me physically. And so I decided, I really gotta get out of the field. I need to, I've got this degree. Let's see what I can do to actually put that to use. And so lo and behold, I look on and found a position at Ames in Facilities Department, and I got on with Ames on the staff at that time. That was now, that'll be 10 years ago in October, that I've now been working with Ames. And so the rest, you can say, is history. So thanks for letting me share that. I wanted to transition to then now into the actual ASA updates, under those two headings of communication and collision. We just had yesterday, our first collision was our ASA Leadership Team Annual Planning Retreat. So that was a three-hour marathon. Actually, I had to leave early for another meeting. But I, just my first interaction with that group, I really enjoy the ASA Leadership Team. That's a high-energy group. I think most of you have worked with, at least most of them, some of them, if you know them individually, you know that each of the individuals is a high-energy person. You put them all together in one room. It's, it can be really interesting. So we had a great time. Really, really exciting things coming up for ASA. So under the category of collisions, we've got events, lots of events that we're planning, things that are coming up. So I just wanted to highlight very quickly, Ames or ASA will be represented at all of the fall-in events coming up next month. And our first all-staff meeting will be Friday, September 6th. Yes, got that right. September 6th. And I haven't had a chance to notify anyone else, so this is all hot off the press. We're all the first to know about that. It'll be 9:00 AM at the Perk. So that's a new thing we're trying this year. Ross did a great job with getting a lot of involvement by having all the meetings virtual. Now, this year, we're gonna keep the virtual, but then add, try and add also an in-person component. So those meetings will be hybrid, and we've got the schedule all laid out for the year that we're gonna try and visit all the other campuses as well with those meetings. So that's a very exciting development. I'm really excited to see how that, how that works out. Let's see. So the last thing for me is, you know, Ross did a great job with this, but highlighting the ripples that you have in your packet. And I wanted to highlight for this meeting today, Emily Russell, and since her name appears twice, you noticed. And I won't read the whole nomination, but I will just read the last two sentences. And this is a nomination by Aaron Fink Smith in Corporate Solutions. Aaron writes, "I feel Emily deserves a ripple because of her leadership, her ability to help me as a new employee, her dedication to the HR process, and her extreme willingness to do hard work during a time of summer vacation, 4th of July, and fiscal year end. Unbelievable. I appreciate Emily's hard work and dedication to helping me grow Corporate Solutions, and because of this, I want to nominate her for a ripple award." Again, thank you, Aaron, for that recommendation, and I know I can speak for myself and anyone who's had the opportunity of working with Emily, but that is not an isolated incident. So let's see. With that, that's all I have. And so again, my name is David Mont. I'm the ASA president, and without I stand for questions.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Great. Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Next up, we have Brielle Rummings, our Student Government Association.
Hello. All right. Greetings, esteemed members of the board, Chair Shaw, Dr. Rothmer, cabinet members, and the Ames community. I'm honored to be here with you guys today and to share this time with you. As you may know, the Student Government Association, the campus activities programmers have been hard at work. But before I share anything about our report, I do ask that I introduce my fellow student leaders here today that they standard be recognized as the new student life team for the upcoming 2024-2025 academic year. Thank you, guys, for coming. All right. So over the summer, Student Government has done a lot of training. We've been developing learning and understanding each role. Along with that, several members from our team got the opportunity to attend the Colorado Drug Information Opportunity Symposium. Very long name. Anyways, they join law enforcement, first responders, public health, prevention treatment, and harm reduction professionals to learn and network for a day. We would also like to invite you all to join us for our Fall-In and Artie's Bazaar. So the dates are located under Report and Upcoming Events, but I'll read them out to you. So for Greeley, it'll be September 4th from 11:00 to 1:30. The Fort Lepton campus will be September 10th from 12:00 to 2:00. Windsor will be September 18th from 11:45 to 1:45. Loveland will be September 25th from 11:00 to 1:00. And then Artie's Bazaar will be October 1st from 11:00 to 1:00 PM, and then the locations are all located on there as well. So one of the last things I wanted to highlight was our English Honor Society Conference in April. SGA had funded for the English Honor Society to go take a trip. They had gone to St. Louis, Missouri, where students Mariah Crawford, Matthew Frank, Sundance Hollingsworth, and April Singer, and Jennifer York. They were representing Ames Sigma Kappa Delta Group. Down below are the different, different awards that they had brought back to Ames, and so I'd like to highlight that because it's one of the great things that we get to see when they come back from our conferences. And they came, they came and gave a presentation to Student Government, which we will now be enforcing as a rule that all student travel comes and gives us a presentation, whether it be pictures or just a fun little speech about what did they do and how did it go. So this one was very, very easy to talk about because they did great. And even the Ames Review won second place in Campus Literacy Magazine. So thank you all. This is all that I have for you today. But does anybody have any question?
Thanks, Brielle.
Thank you, guys.
Next up, for an action item, we have our action item 7A, our Board Focus for 2024 through 2027. And I'll hit a few of the primary areas as we go through, and you're welcome to, as we go through in the packet. Our Board Focuses of the four primary, create a board culture of mutual respect, curiosity, and inclusion. Second one, enhance the board's role in community engagement. Number three, set a standard for Ames to be a model of the future. And number four, support and implementation of the 2024 through 2027 strategic and tactical plan. And of course, there's additional information below on each one of those for, from our previous discussions and what we recommended for approval. And so that comes with the administrative recommendation for a motion to approve. First, I'll ask if there's any questions or comments. Trustee Windell. On number one, where we have 1A, Board Development, attend the conference, Conversation Day, Convocation Day. Can we put Board Retreats and Work Sessions and then put the publications research at the end of that? That's just a... Just revise the order of those. And then on number two, C, Execute Board Communication Plan. I guess I'm fine with that. We have the book. That was my question. Oh, for Support and Implementation, should it be just Support and Implement? 2024-2027 Strategical Tactical Plan? I don't know if that reads right. I'm fine with that. That was it. It was just little stuff. So I'm gonna recap, or attempt to. How's that? Under the Create Board Culture, under 1A, we would change the order of the Board Development to put publication, research, and reports at the end of that. Is that correct? Okay. And I think you were okay with the other one, and then I think the other one was for Support and Implement. Was there another change? Okay. So with those changes, I would be looking for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the revisions. Approve as just explained and revised the Board Focus.
Nice second thought. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, nice habit. We'll move on to 7B, Board Norms. And again, there are 10 of those, so I'm not gonna run through each one. I think we've have reviewed, but I would ask if there's any other revisions, changes, if it fully captured our discussion. If so, it comes with an administrative motion to approve. The Board Norms is written. I approve how it's written. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Perfect. Thank you. And for those of you watching and listening, I think both the Board Norms and the Board Focus really does capture a lot of the work that we were able to do this summer and focus for the board. And so I'd encourage you to take a few minutes to review those as well. Okay, next up, as we have Dr. Russ Rothmer, Acting CEO and President. If you want to go ahead and hit the CEO and President's Goals for 2024-2025.
All right. Thank you, Chair Shaw, members of the board. As you recall...
Um, as you recall, from your June 12th, uh, Board Retreat, you discussed the CEO President's Goals um, for this coming year. And, um, just to, since there's two of them, I'll go ahead and read them for all of us in the audience. So for 2024, 25, um, goal A is 80% or higher completion of the 2024, 25 Strategic and Tactical Plan Initiatives. And B is support of the Acting President and Cabinet and successful transition into and out of Sabbatical. And our administrative recommendation is for, um, you to approve the 2024, 25 President's Goals.
Any questions or comments? If not, that asks for a motion to approve as presented.
I would like to move, um, to approve action item, um, seven Z.
For a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Nice habit. We will move on to item seven D. And this is our Board Self-Evaluation. Again, as, um, part of the work that we were working on, um, it was determined that a procedure needed revision in order to reflect our desired changes um, for our informal self-assessment. And so recommended, recommended revision um, is shown in the redlined attachment. Um, and it basically just removes the assessment. We'll use a plus delta model. Um, and we'll go to just the straight board evaluation. So, um, again, with that, we do need a motion for approval for Procedure 84 dash zero one.
I would make.
Seven D.
Seven B.
Great. I second that. Okay. And we'll pass that one as well. All those in favor, I should ask. That's my bicycle pedals. I lost a foot. Aye. Great. Thank you. And then under seven E, it is a selection of an interim Foundation Board Liaison. Our current Foundation Board Liaison, Trustee John Hayfley, has requested that an interim Foundation Board Liaison be selected to temporarily serve in his place. And so, um, we did have a copy of the, um, Board Liaison description in the packet. And, um, we do not take, need to take a motion or a vote, but we need to see if there is a volunteer that would like to serve as the interim Foundation Board Liaison.
I'll be, I'll be more than willing.
Great.
To do this.
Perfect. Trustee Wendell. And so let it serve for the minutes that Trustee Wendell will assume the interim Foundation Board Liaison. Thank you. Next up, we have our Events Calendar and Upcoming Work Session Agenda Items. Jerry Harvey, our Board Liaison.
Thank you, Chair Shock. Uh, we will start with the calendar of upcoming events. Uh, you'll find there in your packet, there's quite a long list. I went ahead and went through the whole fall semester, um, through to commencement. Um, but I'll start just for the next couple that are coming up and, uh, the rest, of course, you can read there. Um, the ones I wanted to highlight were ones that have been highlighted, uh, in previous uh, presentations earlier this afternoon, which are the Fall In Events. Um, so you'll see those there, Greeley, Fort Lepton, uh, Windsor, and Loveland campuses. So, um, if any trustees can attend those, please let me know. Um, and I'll get you on the list there. They are open to the public, uh, but we do like to let folks know when trustees are going to attend, so please let me know. But yes, trustee Wendell.
I should be back in time. I'd like to do the September 10th Fall In in Fort Lepton.
Perfect.
And, um, I think I could do the September 18th as well.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll get you down for those.
I do have a couple additions, but I'll, um, get with you offline to get those added.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and just as a note, um, trustee O'Hara, I do have you down for the Cattle Barons Ball, so I do have you down for that. All right. Uh, from those, we'll move on into the annual calendar of events. So we'll look ahead to the September Board Meeting. Uh, you'll note there, uh, it is going to be held in the Flight Training Center over in Loveland. Uh, so it's our annual trip over there. Um, as a note, uh, I am working with, uh, Eric and with Mike Millsaps, uh, to schedule a tour prior to the work session starting of the new, um, of the new hangar over there. Um, so I'm still working on the details of that, so I don't have anything to share more. Uh, but as soon as I do have more details, I'll let you know. Um, again, that would be prior to the work session and the work session would begin and go through the rest of the afternoon. Um, any questions about the events list or about the upcoming calendar of events? Awesome. Thank you.
Next up on eight B, we have the ACC Conference Presentation Discussion.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Shock. Uh, if you could take one and pass this around. Um, what is coming around for you is just a very, 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 very rough draft of, um, kind of an idea of what this will look like, uh, just to give everybody again, a sense of, uh, how this will flow. Um, I won't go through this in detail. This is again, just to give you an idea, but I'll hit some of the bullet points here. Um, as I mentioned in previous emails, um, this panel has been scheduled for October 25th while we were there in Seattle, uh, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Um, Dr. Bornstein, before she left, uh, she and I talked, uh, she's very excited about this, as am I. Hopefully you guys are excited as well. Um, the idea for this panel is again, just to cover our onboarding process so that the other folks um, who are attending can take something away from that and maybe utilize that to improve their processes. And of course, for us to learn from them and maybe be able to implement something into our process as well. Uh, the way we've broken this up is to have Dr. Bornstein facilitate, and the rest of us will serve on the panel to answer the questions that are provided here in the bullet points. And it'll kind of flow, um, in chunks based on how our orientation process functions. And so hitting each of those sections of our orientation process and having one or more trustees be kind of a lead on answering that. And then having, um, the rest of the trustees, of course, being able to jump in and provide their perspective as well. But we wanted to make sure that one trustee kind of had the lead on an item and that everybody else from the panel could join in as well. Um, we want it to be very collaborative and open and conversational, so, uh, we hope that the people in the audience will also participate, um, and ask plenty of questions as well. Um, but if not, I think we've created a list of things to talk about that we'll be able to, um, to, uh, list, to last that entire time that we have with them that morning. I will also, prior to the, um, prior to the panel and prior to the conference, put together some bullet points, um, talking points so that, um, folks have something in front of them on the panel, um, as a jumping off point when they're answering one of these questions that are coming up. So that way everybody's prepared, nobody's caught off guard, and you have some jumping off points. So any questions about that and kind of how it will function and flow?
Trustee Wendell, I just think it's a great topic. I mean, it's transitioned a lot since Jean was Harris, it's myself, and then Marilyn, so it's great.
Awesome.
Thank you for organizing and moving us forward with it as well.
Of course. Thank you very much.
Okay. No further questions or comments. Um, we'll move into the CEO President's Report with Dr. Russ Rothimer.
Thank you, Chair Shock. Uh, as you know, it's been a very busy summer for us here at Ames and other places. And what we want to do is highlight, um, a lot of the work that has happened and will certainly continue to happen. So the first item that we have for you is Dr. Ailer, Sir Vice President of Academic Affairs, for our Workforce Report.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Nick Spetsa, who will give the Ames Workforce Development and Innovation Report.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Chair Shock, trustees, Dr. Rothimer, colleagues. Um, I'd actually like to change my presentation to, we do cool stuff. Certainly workforce development doesn't belong to one unit at the college. We're all engaged in growing and developing workforce. And I don't know, I have a question for you. Do y'all think Ames is innovative? Yeah, maybe, a little bit. And innovation is not in one space. So I just want to say that because the title of my presentation and some of my units say that we are workforce development innovation. Well, we're part of that. We're definitely part of doing a lot of cool stuff, though. One of those cool things is not knowing how to use the clicker. Ah, thank you. Which, just one button. Thank, thank you, Chuck. Um, I've got 20 slides, so I'm going to go pretty quickly. I just want to hit a number of highlights. Um, as you all know, we have several campuses. We have seven, right, sites as a college. And we participate in engaging with our community in all kinds of ways. This year, our Windsor campus was recognized for our participation and how, how great a partner we are in the community. Not to say that Windsor is better than any of our other sites. Some people might say that. But certainly worth noting that, uh, they've been connecting very well in our community. At our Windsor campus, we have recently relocated our CPR Training Program. We're an American Heart Association Training Center. And so we've just relocated that and we've just hired a new coordinator for that, and that's Lori Casey. So welcome Lori. I don't know if Lori's with us today. I don't see Lori today. Uh, but Mary Gabriel and Lori do a great job in that space. And I think it's kind of important. I certainly won't read this to you. I know it's in your packet. But as a college, we pay attention to every facet of human life, including human life itself and the support of human life. We train thousands of people every year in these techniques and that help prolong and save lives. So I think that's just worth noting. Um, and we get lots of comments. Uh, Chantal has given us this statement here, but, um, we're known for connecting throughout our community and actually paying attention to life. The program itself, as I mentioned, transitioned this year, so you notice that the, the numbers are slightly down, but they'll be back next year. And they'll probably grow because we have lots of, uh, trust and faith that Lori's going to help grow this program. One of our programs, that's been, uh, doing significant work this year and in partnership across units, is our CDL Program. Our CDL Program is, uh, located down in Fort Lepton. Uh, so Julie Lukingay and Martin Rubel-Cabra have been really taken a strong leadership role. And, uh, in partnership with Amber Pleasant, who's also here, I think, today. Hi, Amber, uh, from the ELL, the English Language Learner Program. We've actually offered services to students who need help learning English as part of their pathway into getting a commercial driver's license. That is an amazing opportunity for people whose native language is not English. By the Federal Motor Carriers Act, people have to have a usable English language skill in case they get pulled over, so they can communicate with whoever they're interacting with. So this is an amazing program that those units have come together to offer to our students in that community, really serving deep into the community's needs in terms of language and access to programming. Additionally, uh, the state had some issues and there was a program that was not quite doing what they should be doing, and they got shut down. Um, and because of Martin's standing in the community, uh, they took on a number of students who would not have had the opportunity to complete their training program. And I think we served about 20, uh, individuals and helped them complete their program so they could get to work and get back on track with where they were originally heading. That's above and beyond, if you ask me. And the value of the CDL Program, in just three weeks, Chris Ballard was able to change his life, get a new job where he's making nine, $90,000 a year. That's phenomenal. We do cool stuff, right? And you can see, this is the, the data for the CDL Program. We've grown in the number of people that we're serving and the number, and the amount of revenue that we're bringing in as a program. So fantastic work in that space. Continuing education, under Heather Lutrick and Rena Mitchell's leadership, has also created a whole bunch of new things. In Northern Colorado, we have, uh, what's called sector partnerships, where the sectors actually create a leadership uh, path themselves amongst the industry to grow the industry and the connection of the industry with the region. We've added one recently, which is a nonprofit sector partnership. And in response to that development, our continuing ed group has created an entire leadership academy for the nonprofit sector. There are hundreds of nonprofit, if you didn't know this, and I didn't know this until recently, there are hundreds of nonprofits across Northern Colorado. I didn't know how many there were. There, there's an amazing number. And there aren't many training programs to help people learn how to do it, how to do it well, how to meet, uh, different standards, how to work with a board. These are all skills that someone has to learn as they get into this space. And so we now have a program, thanks to the leadership of that team, to connect with that sector partnership and our region, their sponsorship from the World Trust. Lots of people are interested in supporting this work, and we are out in front, providing leadership for that. And here's a testimonial, uh, from Cody Rosten, who's been in the nonprofit space. And isn't it nice that we're able to help people feel like they're getting the training they need to prepare them for what they're doing and where they're headed? Did I say we do cool stuff? In that same program, we've developed a doula program. It is a nationally certified program, so we train people to be doulas. We've created a qualified medication aid program, a lot of this in, uh, consultation and collaboration with our healthcare programs at the college. Um, and, uh, you may have heard of Alquist 3D, maybe, uh, that company that print houses was concrete or something. We've actually launched the first course, the first course of its kind. It's a fully online course, six-week training course for people to get the introductory information about how do you get into this industry? What is a concrete printer thing? What are the, I'm saying thing because I know what I'm talking about. Getting into some of that detail and really learning, is this a space that I think I'd want to thrive in? And then there's a path forward. We're in the middle of offering that course right now as we speak. And overall, in continuing education, you can see that we've grown the number of clients served and the revenue of that program as well. Cool stuff. One of the other areas of cool is our new Corporate Solutions Team. So we've redesigned what we're doing in our contracted industry-serving programming, which we now call Corporate Solutions. And we have two folks with us. I think Erin is here. You met Erin a little while ago. I was able to introduce her when she came on board just a couple of months ago. And she's going to introduce one of our other new colleagues, Rea, in a little while. Um, but Chuck, did you say something about oil and gas being important? Yeah, was oil and gas important? Well, we're paying attention to that. We are working with the entire basin to develop a leadership and safety training program. If oil and gas is important to us in the future of the college, it's certainly going to be important to how we develop programming for the college. So we are reaching into that space. We have lots and lots of partners working to help us figure out how to help frontline supervisors in the oil and gas field be good supervisors and create a culture of safety. We're also developing partnerships with many other companies. Here's a list of the folks that we are in business development conversation with now. And if I didn't say before, we do cool stuff. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Spitzer.
Thank you.
I, I like the, are we doing cool stuff? Because we are doing cool stuff. You guys do amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And certainly, uh, it, it belongs to all of our colleagues who are doing the work across all of these industries. Hopefully, I just gave you a taste of some cooler spaces in college.
Thank you.
Uh, next, I'd like to call Dr. Ailer back for, uh, update on high school programs.
Speaking of cool stuff we do, um, I want to introduce Raymond Hard, who is the Executive Director of High School Programs, and he will present the High School Programs Report.
The key is to always have a good hype person with you at all times. So appreciate you, Laura and Amy. Um, thank you all. Chairperson Shock, Dr. Rothimer, Board of Trustees, Cabinet, distinguished colleagues, and all the Zoomies online. Thanks for being here today. We're here for the annual report of high school programs and what we're doing and what's going on in our world. And I think it's pretty clear and evident that I think concurrent enrollment over the last five years has fundamentally changed the way that we think about a lot of things in our, in our community. It's, it's certainly fundamentally changed the way that we think about our, um, K-12 world and what high school means. It's certainly fundamentally changed the way that we think about workforce developments and certainly has fundamentally changed the way that we think about community college and who our community is that we are serving. So I always like to start with some core definitions. It's never a bad idea to know what we're talking about, but for here at Ames Community College, we operate broadly under the umbrella of concurrent enrollment. You may have heard dual enrollment and dual credit and other terms thrown around. Nationally, it's important for us here locally. We are a concurrent enrollment-based program under the CIPA Act here in the state of Colorado. We are not a dual credit program, but if you use those terms in the spirit of what we're trying to do here, we're ultimately providing post-secondary experiences to high school students while they're still in high school. And we have a couple of different. And we have a couple of different flavors here. We're gonna hear very shortly from our director of our early college program, Dr. Rosalaw will come up and talk a little bit about our early college program. Of course, that's our integrated partnership down the street with District Six, where students can get their associate's degree while in high school. We also have a couple of other flavors. Our PTEC program is a, a early college model that includes industry experience in a high demand industry in our area. We now have five operational PTEC programs with industry partners and K-12 partners across Northern Colorado. We have Career Academy, which is a really intensive on-campus CTE experience for students in one of seven or eight various career and technical education fields. And then we also are participants in all of the statewide sponsor programs like Ascent and Trep, which engage and allow high school students an opportunity to get a more college experiences while still being, um, their tuition being funded by the high school location. So don't worry about the definitions. We have an awesome team that'll keep track of the definitions, but that's ultimately um, the flavors that we have here. Each year, and I think you have the reports there in front of you, we provide what we refer to affectionately as our report cards um, that we give to, not only for us here locally, but we also give to each one of the schools that we work with. This is a one-page sheet that overviews the partnership that we have with each of our schools, starting with the high-level demographic information at the top. Number of students, number of credits, degrees and certificates earned by, while students are in high school. We also think it's important to share demographic information, so we're keeping track of which students are participating from which schools and if those demographics match our community's demographics. We include information like uh, success rates and how great students are, how, what percentage of students are successful in these courses. In front of you, you have a couple of copies. One is the macro level view. So this is the totality of concurrent enrollment that was offered through Ames Community College last year. Some big numbers there at the top, nearly forty-four hundred students served. Um, over almost forty thousand credits earned by our high school students. And then in your report, we also break this down by every single school and district that you work with. So if you have a curiosity or a question about what does our partnership look like with Fort Lupton High School, that information is here for you. Um, this is our fourth iteration of publishing this data each and every year, which is, is really exciting for us. And then of course, there's also fun stuff on the back. Things that we're tracking that we care about. How much money are we saving our community? Last year, just under three million dollars in tuition savings went out to our community by participating in these concurrent enrollment programs. If you take into account fees and extra stuff that we cover in other ways, it's well over three million dollars in savings to our community. Down at the bottom, very important to us and certainly as we look into the next strategic cycle. After students participate in our concurrent enrollment programs, after they're engaging with Ames Community College while in high school, what happens to them next? What is the success of our programs? How many of them come back to Ames and complete a degree or certificate? How many of them move on to a four-year institution? How many of them are engaging in the workforce? It's data that we're roughly starting to get our arms around, but it's something that we're tracking year over year to make sure that we can see the impact of these concurrent enrollment programs year over year. So all that data is provided for you all in um, in your packet there. I wanted to give a quick five-year snapshot. I think it's just important to see where we're at and where we've been. In 2019, up at the upper left-hand corner, you can see we served about twenty-seven hundred students. If fast forward five years, you add seventeen hundred students or so on there and you're looking at, we're serving a, a little bit around forty-four hundred students. Um, that's a tremendous growth in our community. That's really excitement, really great excitement for us. We had fifty partner high schools um, in 2019. Last year, we had seventy-seven high schools in our region, providing at least one student, Ames Community College, to engage in our program. But we have a meaningful relationship with every school and our taxing and our service district at this point in time, which is something we're really proud of, serving our community in that regard. And I just wanna highlight this one area here called out in our last strategic cycle was an emphasis on growing our career and technical education programming. That was something we were very interested in to make sure we can continue to grow. Um, you can see back in 2019, there was six hundred students that were in dedicated CTE paths. This year, we had nearly fourteen hundred students that were in CTE degree and credential-seeking programs. So that's really, really important for us. If you take into account all the students that participated in CT, it's more like two thousand students, but these are fourteen hundred students that were in a designated CTE program, uh, pursuing a degree or credential from Ames Community College. So that's your welders, your carpenters, your, your nurses, all of those folks are right in there. Really important for us as we think about serving our community. At this point, I'd like to shift gears a little bit to give you some insight to our early college academy program. And I'd like to introduce our director of that program, Dr. Rosalata, share a few words about what's going on at ECA.
All right. Thank you so much. And thank you for having me here. I'm learning all sorts of lingo. So we're flavors and um, I'm here to represent Early College Academy, one of the many flavors that we offer. And I also like, we do cool stuff. That's, that's a nice little motto. At Early College Academy, we actually have a saying which means effort creates achievement. And that's what we aim to kind of instill on our students, our faculty and our staff. So just a really quick snapshot of kind of our course, um, student enrollment for this year. We have about three hundred and twenty students in the building on Monday. So we actually started two days ago. We are in the depth of things. And it's just great to have all of our students back, our faculty back and our staff back to welcome the students. And so Early College Academy really is this integration of high school and college. And so our students as early as fourteen years old are taking government with an Ames faculty. They're taking music appreciation with an Ames faculty. So very seamlessly do we incorporate that curriculum from Ames into the high school setting. Last year, so in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, um, collectively, our students earned five thousand three hundred and eighteen credits. We did have a one hundred percent high school graduation rate, so all of our students did graduate from high school. Yay. Um, and then our cohort last year, seventy-eight percent of them completed their associative arts degree. And we do see that number shifting just a little bit. We had a handful of students complete some coursework over the summer. So as soon as those degrees are confirmed, we'll be able to kind of update it more into like eighty percent to eighty-one percent, which is great when the national average for completing an associate degree at the high school level is thirty-three. And we were just recently highlighted in the Greeley Tribune. So if you haven't seen that article, there's a really great piece about Early College Academy in there. And then just some updates for this year. Um, going into the building, we got a facilities refresh. So the district who we are so grateful for came in and painted. We got new furniture, new desks. Everything is new, new carpet. And there's just this sense of new life into the building and the students notice it as soon as you walk in, like everything looks so shiny. Um, and so we're really grateful for both Ames and the District Six for investing in our students. We are rolling out what is a block schedule to accommodate some of our science labs. So we were running into issues where students that were enrolled in chemistry at Ames had to miss their seventh period or vice versa, had to miss their sixth period to be able to accommodate the lab. So this year, we created a block schedule specifically for those science labs, so they don't have to miss another class. Uh, and then they also have the ability to come onto the Ames campus and utilize our space here for really interacting with chemistry. We are also going to be offering the associative science. So this is a huge step for ECA as we grow our program. And our sophomores this year, as we talk to them about opportunities at Ames, they get to choose if they want to go into the associative science pathway. And we're going to have then a stronger presence on the campus community. They can, you know, at ECA, we only offer up to calculus one. We have sophomores that are already in calculus one this semester and they're gonna be math out. So it's like, how do we provide better opportunities for them and get them onto our campus and really integrate them with our community and our rest of the student population? And I really feel like this is going to grow enrollment and the future of the program. So we're just very excited for the opportunity. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Lo. All right. I got two more quick notes that I wanna leave you with as we kind of wrap up what high school programs has been up to this year. First of all, we have an amazing, that's the hype crew over there is the amazing high school programs team. I think there's ten or eleven of them over there that really are what make the magic happen. And when we think about a program of excellence that's doing cool stuff, um, here's a cool piece of recognition. The National Alliance of Concurrent Enrollment Partnerships, basically the governing body, the, the main voice at the national level for, for concurrent enrollment best practices, publishes an annual pep talk where they highlight programs that are doing excellent things. Um, this pep talk series was published, I think maybe six or so months ago, highlights Ames Community College and the work that we're doing here as an outstanding example of how to set, establish amazing programs. We've grown a tremendous reputation locally, statewide and nationally as being a program of excellence. NASEP will be featuring multiple of our workshops at the national conference this fall. So we're really excited and proud and none of that would ever happen if it wasn't for those ten or so people over there that really make the work happen on the back end when we think about the quality of program that we put out. And then finally, you don't go from two thousand students to four thousand students without it being felt across campus. And I think maybe five, six, eight years ago, concurrent enrollment was this nice thing that we did with this group of people in the corner of Cornerstone. That's literally where we're located is in the corner of Cornerstone, but um, come visit us. Uh, but now it's concurrent enrollment has become the job of a lot of folks around campus. There has been cross-collaboration more in this last year than I ever recall in my tenure as the director, and I don't know what I just did, but um, um, I just wanna just give a huge shout out and a huge thanks to a lot of people across campus. Um, we have worked closer with Student Affairs and providing student resources to concurrent enrollment students than we ever have before. The impact on our enrollment management team, on our advising team, on our library and support services. And some of the hidden folks that are on the back end billing, oh, don't even get billing started about concurrent enrollment, but it's been a job, part of their lives. It's, it's a lot of work. Um, and this requires a lot of people on campus to make happen. Certainly, I think we've had one of our best collaborated collaboration years to date. And um, it really sets us up nicely for this next strategic cycle, which has tons of collaboration in the concurrent enrollment space. So with that said, um, thank you for listening and I'll take any questions.
Trustee Haley.
Um, I greatly appreciate everything that you and, and all the people do to, to help our high school students. I have a couple of comments about ECA. Uh, please, first of all, I'd like to thank all the uh, people who voted for the bond uh, a few years ago with District Six. Without you, uh, the freshening of ECA wouldn't have occurred. So each of you should be very proud of yourselves. You know, my question for uh, you is I know initially the goal was a hundred students per class for ECA. And I wanna know how, you know, what are some of the things that you're doing to go out and recruit? It's obvious that you've improved those and I greatly appreciate that. Um, and then my other question would be, if you attained the hundred students per class, what, what's the, the top end of the number that you can handle uh, well in that building?
Yeah, I think, I, I have a couple of comments. I think I'll, I'll, I'll share. One, one thing is when ECA was sort of, the, the brainchild of ECA came together ten, eleven, twelve years ago. I think the first class that we introduced was in twenty fifteen. The landscape of concurrent enrollment here locally was very different. I mean, the idea of being able to earn a, a degree while in high school was somewhat of a foreign concept. There's only a few schools in our region that were doing that. Though, I, I would say the one thing that's happened over the last ten years is the growth of concurrent enrollment has accelerated that. And many of the comprehensive schools in our region right now are, have, have opportunities for students to earn thirty credits or forty-five credits or sixty credits. So in some ways, um, I think ACA is in a space where we're really trying to redefine ourselves in some capacity. This idea of being able to offer all that college courses in our building. Um, we, we found is, is not necessarily as big of a draw as it is, you know, as it was ten years ago. So that's our big push right now with the refresh. And really trying to expand concurrent enrollment, or ECA students coming to our campus, being able to differentiate the experience that they want to. Now, we're hoping in, in years' time, a concurrent enrollment student, or I'm sorry, an ECA student could come to ECA for a couple of years and then get into the welding program and finish up in the welding program while they're in high school and really integrate those two things together. I think that will kind of address some of those enrollment things. But in the building, I know it said four hundred to begin, like three twenty-five, and I think we got a fire hazard in that. But I mean, it is a tight building. So for, part of our um, our creativity is, can we get some more of those students on our campus? How some of the ECA campuses, courses on our campus integrate that experience more and more. I think that'll be a huge selling point for families. So they can be involved in the college community, have more choice in their curriculum. And I think it also addresses some of the space issues in the building that we're feeling if we were to get up to four hundred. Yeah, no problem.
Trustee Window. Um, wonderful job again. And I remember when, I think it's termed as the dashboard.
Yep.
Just started. And um, I mean, it's improved and I mean, the statistics are amazing. And it's something you could hand, I don't, anyone to see how successful you've been.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and then if I remember, someone had stated some statistic that if you can get the students on campus at a high school level, they're bound to come back more so than if they never did come on campus. So I think that's a great idea, what you're suggesting.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we have amazing facilities. I think folks, when they think of a community college, if you come to our campus, it really shapes the way that you really think about what we have to offer. So if we can get them on campus, I think it's always a good win for us. Yeah, thank you.
I would want to add my congratulations to the others that were already stated. And I've been watching this program for a long time.
Yeah.
I, it's very impressive how successful it has been. I think we need to get the information. I, I know you do to parents and so forth, but the dollars that we are saving some of those parents, I, I don't think uh, we, we've done enough to get that information out to our county residents. It's just a great story to tell. Uh, let's, let's tell it far and wide.
Totally.
Great reports. Thank you. Congrats.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, next up is the Grants Report by Chuck Jensen, our Vice President of Administrative Services.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rothmer, colleagues. Uh, thanks Nick, Ray and Rosa. Uh, that's a act, tough act to follow. Incredible reports. So I have to up my game as I change from talking about property taxes and budgets and legislative issues. So uh, bear with me here as I change tone and not talk as the mild-manner CFO of the college, but rather the cool topics of the work that we do in Grants, our Grants Office. So indulge me in that little humorous pleasure there. Uh, as we start uh, the report, I, I'd like to recognize our Grants Team. Jen Seedorf, our Assistant Controller, Malone Miller, our Grants Manager, and Karice Arnold, our Grants Accountant and Grants and Foundation Accountants. And of course, all the program people across the college that participate in all these different grants and activities. Uh, you have the report before you. It's broken into five sections. Uh, I'm gonna highlight just a few in each of the ones that are, I think are particularly exciting. Under Student Support Services, again, we continue to be very successful in our Trio Grants. Twenty-plus years, we've been in recipients of our Trio Grants and the number of students that they serve each year. Cozy has been through the state of Colorado, has always continued to be another source of, of support for our students. And these two, Care Forward Colorado and Career Advanced Colorado, were all legislative I, legislative priorities in the last couple of sessions, uh, where the, the state legislature was very supportive of career uh, and technical education. And in career or Care Forward Colorado, two hundred and eighty-five students were served in that, that program. And in Career Advanced Colorado, almost five hundred students were served with that type of funding from those two programs. So again, very cool. Uh, in uh, some other highlights within our Enhanced Learning, you know, we do have all of our Perkins funding. Again, we're twenty-plus years into having received that type of funding from the state. And that funding goes in to support equipment in CTE. It's been a major, a major contributor to how we are able to continue to maintain the high quality of our instructional labs, again, to the Perkins programs. Uh, then you have some other exciting topics there. OER with the state where our faculty are developing open educational resources. You know, that continues to add to the bottom line of what the students are saving each year as our faculty continue to develop additional resources that are free for students in their instructional capacities. In, in our scholarships area, you know, again, some private scholarships that we received and the community assistance. And this kind of ties into what uh, Nick was presenting on Colorado First and existing industries. You know, the type of funding that we're getting from the state to help provide that, that training to our business and corporate partners across the county. And uh, can't go without saying, near and dear to my heart too, as an accountant, Tax Help Colorado. I think we have one of the, one of the finest tax help programs around where we're offering our, our amazing accounting department under Gina Jones and her team uh, providing that type of tax assistance to, I think as the report says, almost eleven hundred participants this last year. And I know from being in Cornerstone is where they hold most of the weekend and evening sessions. And when I'm leaving in the afternoon or in the evening and, you know, the parking lot's full. And on Saturdays, the parking lot's full of cars and, and people waiting to get that assistance on their tax forms. And so a great service that the college provides. And then uh, again, a lot of the collaborative partnerships And then, uh, again, a lot of the collaborative partnerships have already been highlighted very well prior to, with Nick and, and Ray and Rosa as far as our relationships with high schools across the district and across the northern Colorado. And we actually, and then again, some of the relationships we have with some of the higher ed institutions across the state. Uh, our Bueno programs with the University of Colorado Boulder and then Metro State and Colorado State, uh, different relationships that we have. So again, showing that widespread type of activity, not only with high schools, uh, but we do partner with other higher ed institutions across the state and business and industry. And again, help with support from our grants team as they manage and do all the reporting and work with the program people in that area. So there, did I up my excitement a little bit from talking about property taxes? I hope so. Got to keep up with that crowd. Man, exceptional reports they gave. I'll stand for any questions, Madam Chair.
Trustee Window. Um, great, great presentation. Um, question, just one, on the Daniel's Fund Boundless Opportunity Scholarship? That was intriguing. Does, does Ames match the student with the scholarship? Are they responsible for finding those scholarships?
Uh, we're responsible for finding the students, selecting the students. We are.
Any questions?
Nice job, Chuck.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
I'll be back to my regular self when we get back to budgets next time. So.
Uh, next I'd like to call up Zach McFarland, who's our Chief Marketing and Communications Officer. And Zach, before you start in your 35 plus slides, I did take trustee O'Hara's note, in case it's not covered in there, about highlighting the concurrent enrollment savings for you, just in case.
It's okay. I can't say that I understand what you said. There's a note. We'll get to it. Yeah. Uh, Chuck had to follow his presentations. I feel like I get to follow Chuck's. So thank you, Chuck. I appreciate that grants report. Um, we are doing cool things and I think marketing and communications, um, part of our, our job is to make sure people know about those cool things. And, and what we're doing is trying to get more sophisticated in how we do that. We'll talk about the, the strategic plan here in a little bit, but what we engaged in over the last few months is a brand and awareness perception study. Um, we engage with ID5. ID5 is the company that did our, our, our new logos, our new tagline and some initial studying over the last few years that happened in 2021. So we re-engaged with them to come in and start looking at how our community views us, if they're aware of us, how they perceive us, um, with the goal of actually developing KPIs and measurements so we can, uh, measure these things over time and, and see how we're doing and then where we want to go. Um, really, you know, the basis of these studies was to pressure test the Ames brand platform. People's preference, their meaning, their ability to recall our brand platform, um, if they know the correct actions to take. And as I mentioned, we want to develop longitudinal studies of the Ames brand, um, so that we can know which levers we need to pull, if we need to, um, to increase or maintain, um, certain measurements over time. The surveys were sent to these audience segments. We picked these specifically current students, um, non-enrollees, those who declined admission, counselors, unknown prospective students, so ones that are not engaged with us to see if they even know we exist. Um, we broke those into non-Hispanic and Hispanic, uh, demographics. And then unknown parents, parents who are also not engaged with Ames to see, um, their perception of Ames and if they know who we are as well. Uh, one thing to note here, and I'll get to it in a little bit, I think that's slide 52, uh, Dr. Rothimer, um, is we're a little low in the counselors and the non-enrollees. Um, over time, as we continue to do these surveys, we're going to want to beef up, um, those numbers so that those can become more statistically significant. Um, really, as an executive summary of the overarching study, what we learned, um, is that the core brand pillars, that's our messaging, our platforms really do resonate with the segments that, that we, um, surveyed. Um, interestingly enough, there was no difference, uh, between Hispanic and non-Hispanic students either. The, the, the messages remain the same and they resonate with, um, all of the groups equally. So that was an exciting thing for us to see. Um, we, people who, we know this because we get to talk about Ames a lot and engage in our community, but people who do know Ames, love Ames. It's an amazing place. We are doing a lot of cool things, uh, and people know that, especially the ones who know us. Um, and it's our job to leverage that brand affinity by, by really utilizing, um, the people who are engaged with Ames as we go out and talk about the things that we're doing, um, and the initiatives that we've undertaken. Um, another thing that was interesting for us, you know, we changed the tagline back in 21 to all in. Um, there's a double meaning there that, that's begun to, uh, manifest. And that's that when people are out there experiencing our brand through our materials, uh, particularly prospective students, they can often think that we're talking about them, that they need to be all in when they engage with us. And this is an opportunity for them to do that. Um, our initial meaning was for them to know that we are all in for them. And so what we see here, particularly in certain demographics, is a lot of opportunity for us, um, to clarify that message and make sure that they understand that yes, all in for them is really great. But we also mean that all of the resources that we, uh, make available and, and the initiatives that we have are, were there for them across the spectrum as well. Um, affordability and value, uh, you know, there's, there's a, a difference between affordability and value and cheap. And so really trying to leverage, um, our affordability and value and, and coming up with good messaging opportunities for that, um, that shows them exactly what that means for them. Also, a lot of, uh, a lot of notes on the fact that we have a lot of programs, we had a lot, have a lot of opportunities. I mean, people really appreciate that and that is a differentiator for us across, um, multiple spectrums. One thing to note is, you know, and I'm going to go very briefly, um, through, um, some of the specific segments. But overall, one thing we're, we're focused on right now is, is turning these into KPIs. And I'm only going to show you a couple of measurements per, uh, demographic. What we are doing right now, uh, we have a meeting with ID5 on Monday to start finalizing this. Uh, we will be moving into competitors analysis and on the same metrics. That way, when we want to develop KPIs, we'll, we'll take these, we'll do competitors. And then we'll start to see where we're at in our field and that's going to allow us to develop the KPIs necessary to say, either we're good to go, we need to enhance this a little bit, we need to change that. And, and that's the way that we'll develop our KPIs is by, um, kind of cross-examining, um, our peers. Let's take a, a quick look at current students. Uh, again, I'm only showing you a couple of the metrics, but we asked them, uh, when you first learned about Ames, how would you describe it? When you see here, um, are, are a lot of the terms that we would want to see affordable, great, opportunity. And really 77% of, of people in this demographic, how they felt when they engaged with us, um, was positive. Um, again, going back to KPIs, what we'll do in the future is we'll be able to see if 77% is where we should be, right? It feels pretty good right now, uh, as we go and analyze competitors and stuff, we'll see, um, how good that metric really is. But really 77% of people feel, um, positive when they interact with us in our current student realm. Um, once you became a member of the Ames community, what are the words you would use now to describe the college? Community comes up regularly in this study, um, helpful, student-centered. A lot of the things that we hear in here that we tend to think we focus on, I think are resonating, um, in our surveys as well. And then you'll see 89% of, of current students feel very positive, uh, when they interact with this question. So I think overall that's really, um, good. Um, a, a few quotes that come out of this demographic, starting my education at Ames has been the best decision I made in my life. Great college with challenging curriculum, offering abundant student resources and services. Um, in my experience as a professional adult, returning to education has been exceptional. I feel both fortunate and grateful to have re-engaged with higher, higher education here. Uh, when you talk to ID5, it's interesting. They say, hey, we're not trying to, to blow smoke here. You know, there really wasn't a lot of negative comments coming out of, out of this survey. It was a lot of this. And they typically want to give you some of that negative feedback so that you know the areas that you need to work on. But by and large, um, what we saw here in this survey was a lot of these types of comments, um, which again resonates with, I think, a lot of what we hear here, what we hear across, uh, many services at the college. Um, general current student insights, the current, uh, brand platform, it scores high for meaning, preference and actionability. Students here feel supported. They feel a sense of belonging and community. Um, and, and overall a very strong satisfaction with the experience they're having at Ames. Um, things that we recommend that we are working on, they're reflecting in the strategic plan, especially across team, uh, with recruitment and SACE. Uh, really authentically communicate Ames as unique community. I actually don't think we, um, communicate about the actual community here that much in our materials. Um, and there's a lot of opportunity to do so because we do have a thriving student community here. Um, again, I already noted the highlight, that reciprocal meaning of all in, that's something that we're taking a look at in our messaging to make sure that they understand exactly what we mean by that. Um, and then really, uh, taking more opportunity to, to use the student and graduate voices in our materials that we have access to, which we see excellence at Ames every, every month here. And I think we all know the power of those. And it's how do we now leverage those out in the community to help draw people in? Perspective students, non-Hispanic, uh, agree or disagree, I'm familiar with Ames. Right here, what, what, what I take away is when we look into familiarity, I, I see about 50% there, um, who would disagree or strongly disagree with that statement. I think that highlights a lot of opportunity for us, um, to continue to get out in the community and make sure people know, um, that we are here. Um, same thing here, uh, well, not very different thing actually, but how clear is the core message? Though they might not know about us, about 50% of people, what we see here is when they do hear about us, that the message that we're utilizing is actually very clear to them. And it, it ranges from, you know, mostly, uh, clear and extremely clear. You're looking at 68% there. Um, so that feels pretty good that once we're able to message to them, um, they know exactly what we're pitching and what our, our message is. Um, Hispanic students, we see, uh, you know, roughly the same stuff. I'm familiar with Ames. Um, that disagree, strongly disagree. Again, you're sitting at 42%. Um, is that right? Was my math right on that? Dr. Rothmer, I'm looking at you, PhD. I think so. Yeah. Uh, you know, we're still seeing opportunity here, uh, to grow, um, our awareness campaigns out in our prospective student community. Um, but as I noted earlier, uh, when we have an opportunity to get in front of them, they also believe that the message is very clear and they understand the value proposition that, um, we are placing. Um, prospective student insights, and, and again, those are just a couple of bullet points. This whole study was a couple of hundred slides long. Um, I tried to do that, but I was told no. Um, so, uh, there is no statistically significant, uh, difference between Hispanic and non-Hispanic students and the perception of Ames or its marketing messages. Um, that's great. That means that we can take the same core message and distribute it throughout our community, um, with small tweaks, maybe to, uh, to language and things like that. The core meaning, uh, the core message is shared, limits the recall meaning, uh, which means there's, there's some tweaking to be done in their ability to recall where it came from. Um, and so we're looking at our, our marketing mix and our spread there. Um, our video, we did, we did a lot of query on the video. We did produce our first commercial last year. Um, and it's about students' commitment to succeed more than about Ames' commitment to students. And so it's very student focused and that's where they're getting that other meaning and it's that they need to succeed while they're here. And so again, um, some work, uh, needing to be done there. Um, variety of courses again resonates very strongly across all audiences, including parents. Recommendations, use consistent messaging across those demographics, um, stay free from jargon. Uh, we need to start taking advantage of the taglines, multiple meetings, uh, and really, uh, highlighting student success in that realm. And then really, uh, looking at how we, how we highlight the variety of choices that students have. So what we end up doing out of these types of studies is tweaking a lot of our messaging. Interestingly enough, we tweaked the billboard off of 257. I don't know how many people traverse that billboard. We started highlighting that 91% of our students are debt-free, leave Ames debt-free. And we've actually received quite a, uh, quite a lot of comments on that billboard that, you know, that message is resonating with people. Uh, tweaks like that come right out of studies like this where we start highlighting other, uh, messages. Parents, this one was cool. I actually did focus group on this one instead of a, a blanket survey. Um, it actually probably went against some of my own biases to, to see what parents are saying. Uh, what's your perception of the value of higher education today? It's actually very high. Uh, about 90% viewed it as valuable or very valuable, um, the state of higher education. That's not necessarily what we read and hear about in the media right now and in the news. Um, the, the message there is that that value is crumbling, but in our community, 90% still view that as very valuable. Um, how important is a college degree in getting ahead in today's economy? Again, 76% there. Um, and, and you go up to 96% if you go to somewhat important. So there's still a belief in the value of educate, education and what it brings. How would you rate the ROI of a college degree? Again, good to high return, sitting at 80% there. Uh, and so people would still view it as, as, as there's a high return on that investment. And then how does a, a community college education compare with a four-year college education? Um, a little lower in the percent, but still pretty high and, and, and tells me that we might not have as big of a gap to make up there as we initially perceive because of our day-to-day we live in, we tend to think that there's a, a much wider gap there. Uh, but the, a high percent of people view it as the same or just as good. But still, that gives us opportunity to continue to highlight the value that we bring, um, across the board through all the demographics we serve. And then familiarity with Ames from parents, uh, you know, about 60% are, are, uh, familiar or very familiar. And then 88% uh, would, would, if you pulled out to somewhat familiar. So there's a lot of familiarity there. Uh, and, and so what we need to do again is, is to continue to highlight the benefits to that demographic, market specific to them, um, so that they not only know we exist, but they know the value that we bring as they're trying to, to think through, um, you know, the decisions for their, for their kids, especially when we're talking about parents. I view that on my own, my kids are 11, eight and five, and I'm already starting to stress, you know, about college and how much that's going to cost us. And so, you know, working at Ames, I'm lucky that my kids believe that they're going to go here and, and that, and they will. So. Uh, parent recommendations, leverage the brand equity. Uh, we need a little bit more targeted general awareness specifically to that demographic with outcomes highlighted. Parents are very interested in those outcomes. Um, dual enrollment and transfer options. Ray, you just did an awesome job on, on the presentation there. If we look at the strategic plan, you know, uh, dual enrollment strategy and stuff is in there. And it's exciting to think about that strategy continuing to, to grow so that we can figure out how we, how we want to promote that and where, so that we can support that and make sure that, um, parents know about all that awesome money that's being saved in those programs. Um, and then looking at specific cost and financial aid information, as I just alluded to anecdotally, that's what I'm concerned about as a parent. And we need to actually give those numbers to parents so they see some of the value and savings that they have by coming here, while not sacrificing quality of education. I didn't do much on non-enrolled students here and, and then also similarly in counselors, just a couple of takeaways, uh, because we did not have too many, um, you know, respondents for these categories. But really, when we looked at non-enrolled students, those are ones who engaged with us but did not end up enrolling. Uh, really uncertainty about actual costs and available financial aid was a factor. Um, and then not being able to find support and direct assistance, that could be a web issue, it could be phone call issue. And so, you know, these are some of the things that kept pinging in that small subset. Um, what we're looking at doing for recommendations there is obviously making cost and financial information more accessible. Um, and then looking at that prospective student communication flow. Um, these items and the ones on counselors, all of this is, uh, you're going to find all that on the, uh, strategic plan as well, which is exciting that we're actively, um, you know, look, alongside SACE, obviously we're actively looking at how to, uh, look at these issues, assess them a little bit more comprehensively and develop solutions for them. And then in counselor insights, what we saw, that they would like a little bit more collaboration with Ames staff and, and that there's a perception gap about the quality of education among prospective students. And so really going in and saying, hey, how do we get into the high schools and that demographic and look, um, at, at how they perceive us alongside these other four-year institutions? These are the recommendations, um, looking at enhancing counselor outreach, providing a little bit more detail on, on those areas, uh, financial aid, academic support, four-year transfer pathways, uh, transfer pathways. Um, and then again, looking at student life and how we authentically, um, talk about the student life here at Ames. Uh, next steps for us, I already mentioned, and I'm going to mention it again when we go through the strategic plan report here in a, in a second. I think I'm next up. Um, you know, our next steps are, are, uh, looking at that competitor analysis. Um, our goal is to develop, uh, longitudinal goals that we can actually pull levers on and say, hey, if I, we might need to raise brand awareness. We might need to raise brand perception. How do we do that and by how much? Um, and so we are, uh, hopefully in the next few months, we'll be looking at, at further analysis on, in our region and our state, uh, similarly sized and, uh, uh, organizations. And then we'll, we'll develop KPIs and then we'll see how we're actually doing alongside other institutions. So I, I really appreciate the time. That's about as fast as I'll get through 32 slides, uh, and, uh, and, uh, I stand for any questions.
Trustee O'Hare.
My compliments on your excellent presentation. Uh, and Chuck, yes, you should take notes.
No, no, that didn't, that didn't go my way. That didn't go my way. We'll talk, we'll talk.
I, I just, uh, so appreciate your, uh, presentation. And I want to compliment you and your team and the progress that you have made over a pretty short period of time of really improving the sophistication and the professionalism of our marketing program. We're doing some great things to get our message out. So.
Thank you.
I, I just think it was fantastic. I, I would like to see maybe three times more billboards that say, 91% of our graduates graduate debt-free. I, that's just a great message to get out there.
Yeah. One thing that was interesting to me, uh, again, it was, it would not have been what I would have expected coming out of a survey like this. Um, for recall, as far as when students, uh, and, and people engage with us, with when they say, this is what I, where I remember hearing about Ames, billboards and digital marketing were one, two and very close. Uh, and I probably would not, I would not have predicted that, you know, um, billboards, I would have said before. Billboards, I would have said before this served a certain purpose. And I wouldn't have put it in a very broad, you know, general awareness category that had much impact, but they really do. And so I think as we get more feedback like this, as we get more feedback on the messaging and how it resonates, we'll obviously be tweaking it and sending more of those around the neighborhoods. So thank you.
Great, good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Trustee Wendell. Great presentation, and you did a good job going through it quickly. Question on the KPI comparisons between other colleges. Do you look at like this in the state and make fair comparisons? Because, I mean, there's places all over the state, how do you make a fair comparison?
That's what we pay ID5 to help us do. I think we would be looking at similarly sized colleges, you know, people who are in our area. And you're going to have to measure them with the same types of metrics, the same demographics, the same survey base. You know, so that you're getting as best of a comparison as possible. My hope is in May, in my recap, that we will have completed that. And then I'll be able to give you a much more comprehensive answer on how we did that.
Okay, and I think this next one is kind of continuing, continuing that. On your, the questions that you ask, the specifics, is it based on demographic areas? I mean, do you, do you break it down to demographic areas, like to South, South Weld County and then Northern Weld County at all, or is it just all bundled?
This one was service area based. We surveyed our broad service area in those specific demographics.
It's great, and the bulletin board, I see it all the time, I mean, and it's bright yellow. It's quick, simple, and I think everyone's paying attention.
It hits different when you drive by, I drive by there all the time. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Nice job.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you, Zach, good job. So as Zach alluded to, the next item on the president's report is for us to share the strategic plan tactics for this coming year. So the first part of the report, you heard a lot of the great things that were, have been done and we're continuing to do. But this next item really is what we're focusing on this coming year. So to that end, I'd like to call Cabinet up and share with you a few of the tactics that I know that with the strategic plan, starting July one, a lot of them have started a little bit before that, but we'll give you kind of a highlight of this coming year. So Chuck's over there planning how he's going to outdo Zach, so come on up.
All right, welcome, welcome back. Me, I have one A, one, strategy one, objective A, and I'll go through item one through four. Strategy one is AIMS supports learners throughout the recruitment, enrollment, and retention journey by streamlining processes and extending opportunities. Objective A is to, is to improve and increase prospective student marketing and communications. Our items on this are, one, to conduct an audit of brand marketing. Two, to complete a brand study to measure current levels of awareness and perception. Three, to define key data points and establish a baseline of measurement. And four, to create a brand marketing dashboard to measure the progress. That was my whole, that was my whole presentation. And so at this point, we consider items one and two to be complete. We have conducted the audit of brand marketing. We have completed the brand study of measuring those levels of awareness and perception. This competitors' analysis is the, is number three, that's that item, so that we can work to develop those KPIs and those baselines of measurement that hopefully will extend throughout quite a bit of time. And then after that, we'll be developing our actual dashboards where we, where we can pull and, you know, easily monitor those and look at them. So any questions on that? Awesome, thank you.
All right, so continuing right along with objective B. The first thing that we'll highlight is enrollment dashboards. And really what we're doing here is starting out with some baselining. We know what our enrollments have looked like, but we want to take a little bit more of a detailed look into that and also to define different sub-populations of interest. So that may be minority students, first generation, low income, single-parent students. Like we can slice and dice in a lot of different ways with the ultimate goal of kind of democratizing that data and then empowering our teams throughout the college, really, to use that data in their decision-making. That leads into the second part, which is including more funnel data to inform decision-making. Ideally, we're able to kind of slice and dice and make that data available all the way from a request for information through the application process to actually bottoms and seats, retention, completion, and then to alumni. So basically, that entire student lifecycle and journey with AIMS, being able to have that data kind of at our fingertips so that our functional teams are able to use that. Second is a CRM implementation rollout, that's a customer relations management software. We are in the ending stages of the initial implementation of that. Our new CRM is called Element four fifty-one. And eventually, that same student lifecycle I talked about, we'll be able to do things in that CRM kind of throughout the lifecycle, from the time that the student requests information to applying for the college, to even how we say like, hey, it's time to meet your advisor, different things like that. It's also does some really cool things, so like in terms of our ability to, you know, interact with the student, we'll be able to seamlessly move from email to text messaging to live chat to phone calls and keep records of all that. So it's really neat, the level of detail we'll have on an individual student level. Next, as we go to objective C, which is improve and increase student enrollment. Again, one of those things that we actually completed, if you've seen the website yesterday. We implemented the AIMS Tuition Promise Program, so rolling out this fall. Any student with an adjusted gross income of sixty-five thousand or less for dependent students, fifty thousand or less for independent students. After federal and state grants are taken into account, any tuition dollars that remain, the college will cover. And just so you know.
Yeah, it's worth talking about.
Just so you know, while we're saying, check, we did that, we have more in the works that we hope to bring to you in a couple months of how we go even further with that promise. Next is to learn about stopouts and dropouts and their challenges. Really, we want to know for our students that either stop out or drop out, is it something that we could have done, or is there something we could have done to help them continue or to help them to reengage with us? Sometimes it's they moved away and it's, you know, we can't move them back here. But if there were other things we can do in terms of basic needs or in terms of tutoring supports and things like that, just-in-time interventions to keep that student in class, we want to figure out what those things are and really engage that population to figure out what can we do better to keep those students in our classrooms and ultimately successful in our programs. Next is D, improve and increase student retention and completion. So something you'll hear about, I think, in a couple months, a little bit more in detail. We're really excited to do this thing called We Educate. It's based on this idea of their curricular approach to student affairs. And so we have a team that's been leading this work. All of our departments throughout SACE have been engaged in the work. And it's basically creating common learning outcomes and different aims and education plans and things like that and the work we do outside of the classroom. That basically by doing certain activities, say, in our student life department or even in financial aid, you may have transferable life skills that you're kind of obtaining through that. And how do we document that and how do we really make sure that students know that as well? Next is to build foundations for collaborative solutions for student success. That's a collaboration between SACE and Academic Affairs, largely, and I'll give the credit to our two assistant vice presidents, Dr. Aaron Presswich and Dr. Andrea DeCosmo. They lead our AA and SACE Bridge Committee. These are collaborative things between the two divisions to look at things like improving success and gateway courses, our first-year experience, our guided pathways, lowering DFWs of students that obtain a DF or W in a class, and really finding ways collaboratively between the two divisions of how do we help our students to succeed and to continue? Do you want to add anything to that?
I just, the only thing I would want to add at this point is you'll notice in the strategic plan, there are a lot of items that are collaborative across traditional divisions. And we're organizing and finding ways to work together so that we can leverage all of the good things that are going on to benefit the students.
Next is development of an appreciative advising model. It's based in kind of appreciative inquiry and that work to, there's typo there, but it should be reimagine our case management model, and then to engage advisors and relevant professional development for that appreciative advising model. And then I think I turn things over to Dave.
The next one is to continue pathway work to implement Pathways two point oh. We've made some significant progress on what's known as pathways. How do you move through courses to complete a degree and all of the support services that go with that? We're looking forward toward aligning how we schedule, how we advise, making information more available to students and to other people around campus so that we can help people stay on track and move through the programs that they're enrolled in. Number five is additional transition program opportunities. I mentioned the first one, high school to AIMS is one that we're beginning work on. We're finding where are the blockages for people to smoothly go from high school right into coming right to AIMS and moving straight into coursework. And we're going to be looking at revising processes and eliminating barriers so that high school students can more easily transition to AIMS, that we have better transition from AIMS to work, developing programs hopefully with CSU, Metro, other four-year schools based on the model of the AIMS to UNC.
And last thing we have on this one is to design and begin construction on the Student Health and Wellness Center. We have selected an architect at this point, and we also have our interviews for the contractor next Friday. So we're right along in that project, again, in collaboration with Sunrise Community Health as our healthcare provider in that facility. And exciting things to come. Chuck, anything to add there?
We're building really cool stuff. No, in all seriousness, you'll notice on your agenda for next meeting, Mike Millsaps, our executive director of facilities, will be doing a work session on our facilities plan. So stay tuned for that. Mike, Mike is preparing a presentation there that'll go into in-depth on both the Health and Wellness Center, the AWIC building, and then the work on our hangar that we just recently purchased. So really good stuff.
And, and that was actually a transition to strategy two, objective A. Number one, under transform and create new curriculum to meet contemporary learner and business partner needs, is exploring innovative credentialing options. And a couple of things that we're working on right now that we know we'll be briefing you on is implementing badges and micro credentials into the curriculum. There are probably some more innovative options that we'll discover as we get into this work a little bit more. Chuck just talked about numbers two and three under objective A. So I'll go to objective B, transform and create new instructional delivery modes centered on student success and completion. And the item that we have listed there is to develop a mature program of online education. We have a lot of pockets of excellence in online education and digital support of courses. And so our goal here is to coordinate that and make it a really strong overall program and expand that to additional areas.
Good afternoon, trustees and Dr. Rothmer. I'm going to provide a couple of highlights on objective C, which is enhance strategies for employee talent acquisition, new hire process efficiencies, and ongoing professional growth and development. Under number one, our goal is to develop a hiring solution program to increase our applicant pools. At our last annual report in November, reported that our employee applicant pools have declined over the last couple of years since COVID. So we're going to implement some strategies to try and pull those applicant pools back up. Our goal is to make a more informed data, talent, data-driven talent decisions and have the ability to actually push jobs out to the market versus utilizing passive recruiting techniques. And also to increase our marketing of our career opportunities. We began this work a few months ago, and I, and I feel like that we're already seeing some improvement. So hopefully, when I come back in November with the annual report, we'll be able to have a reflection of that in our report. Another strategy under that one is that we're going to implement an employee recruitment referral program. Hopefully, we'll be pushing that out here in the next month or two because we began work on that as well. So there'll be more to come on that. The last item is develop and implement an intentional leadership program. This is a program that we have been working on for the last year. And so I'm excited to announce that we are going to be starting a year-long AIMS Leadership Institute program called GRO. And it's an acronym for Getting Ready for Opportunities at Work. This initiative is for AIMS employees who are invested in their continuous growth and the impact they have throughout the college. The program starts in September, will be a year long, as I mentioned, we have six modules. And I'm just going to read those real quickly. It begins with self-awareness is module one, building trust-based culture is module two. Three is giving and receiving feedback with emotional intelligence. Four, developing others with intention. Number five is employment law for leaders. And the last one is career growth now and into the future. So we're really excited about this program. We have a cohort of thirty-three, a welcome event is next week to kick off this new program for our employees. And that is all I have.
Wow. Thank you, team, that was wonderful. So a lot of great things to look forward to and a lot of teams working together on this. The last item on the president's report is the monthly recognition of new employees. So if we could have the supervisors come up to the podium with any new employees you'd like to introduce? Thank you for starting, Miranda.
Good afternoon, my name's Miranda McFarlane. I'm in the Employee Services Department, and I have two new employees here today with us. I have Jamie Heiss and Tracy Berger. And they are both human resource specialists in our office. So you will see them first thing when you come into our suite. So we're really excited to have them on our team. They've been here since late spring, sorry, late spring, early summer.
Good afternoon, trustee Shaw, Dr. Rothmer, board trustees, cabinet. We have a couple of new employees in campus safety and security. Couple of them are old faces, but now they are officially AIMS. So first, we have tech officer two, Rayelle Rivas. Rayelle will be working most of the evenings and she'll be on the Greeley campus. And we have Wilton, who's a tech three officer. He will be overseeing events, also patrolling campus here on the Greeley campus and helping with student and external, internal events with the marcom team, the events team. And then we have Kirk Hill. Kirk is actually the Precision, our contracted security company. He's a supervisor, so he patrols all the other campuses and does the scheduling for all the contracted security and make sure on the overnights and the weekends and including events, he works with us to make sure campus is covered and allows our team to enjoy convocation and day like that while they cover the campus. So welcome all these to AIMS.
Hi, I have the privilege of introducing our new bilingual staff associate in adult education and English language learning. Isabel Escalera Viera joined us at the end of June. She has spent her whole life being very fortunate basking in the sun between Colorado and Florida, where she earned her bachelor's in psychology. And she is someone who just deeply enjoys and appreciates nature. So whether it's on the beaches of Florida or in the Rocky Mountains here in northern Colorado, she's right at home. So Isabel is so excited to be a part of the personal development of others, whether that's through helping them with their adult education pursuits or with their language learning goals. So we've been so fortunate to have her, it feels like she's already been here for a year in a very good. So we've been so fortunate to have her, it feels like she's already been here for a year in a very good way. She just jumped right in, so we're really glad to have her here.
This is Kayla Thompson, she's the new recruiter for the recruitment team. And we're super excited to have her, she has lots of experience and will help us grow and achieve all of those strategic goals.
Right, I am excited to introduce Zirwa Tariq, she's our new graphic designer media specialist in the student life department. So she supports graphic design and media for all of the student fee-funded initiatives that come out of student life, whether those are those amazing CAP events and SGA initiatives and club activities that you'll hear Rayel report about each month, or Arti's Pantry, Arti's Recovery, all the other student life initiatives. She's originally from Pakistan where she earned her Bachelor of Science. And last year she completed her Master of Arts degree in graphic design. She's multilingual, fluent in three languages. And she also loves the outdoors and going on adventures and also reading, her goal for this year is 50 books.
Good afternoon, I am Erin Finksmith, I'm the Executive Director of our new Corporate Solutions Department. I would like to introduce Ms. Rea Davenport, she is our new fulfillment coordinator. She is going to be working with us to manage all the logistics and projects of corporate industry training. We have quite a bit on our plate right now as a new department. And I would like to say that she has proven to be an expert in contracts and SOPs and she might give Chuck a run for his money here down the line at some point in staff. So anyway, Rea is also going to be helping me hire us, I should say, hire and train new corporate solutions staff. So she is a gem to our department and I just really want to welcome her and we're excited to have her, so Ms. Rea.
So welcome to all the team members and Chair Shaw, that concludes the president's report.
Great, thank you, and welcome to everybody who has now joined the Ames team. Next up is reflections, comments, and accolades. As you know, during this time, we look at time to do any recognitions, look at our reflections, future topics, kind of that round piece. Trustee Hayfley.
Chair Shaw, I'd like to thank you for your incredible Ed Op piece this morning in the Greeley Tribune. You did an outstanding job of celebrating all the great things that occur at Ames. And it's easily done with the unbelievable students and staff that we have here. But you did a great job of representing all the things that occur, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Wendell. I would just like to say thank you to everyone for putting together all the presentations, it's a lot of work. Really appreciate all the information. And I think, Dr. Rothmer, you're in good hands with everyone, so thank you very much to everyone.
Thank you.
I too, I too would compliment Dr. Rothmer and all of you that put the agenda together and all the excellent presentations. I'm just glad we don't have to take a test after these board meetings on some of the details you present to us. Great job.
Great, thank you. I'd just add, Dr. Spesa, we do cool things. You know why though? If you feel the energy in this room from the team and the presentations, how can you not do cool things, right? And that's a big shout out to everybody in here. Thank you. I wrote down several things of, when I was looking at Ray, Ray got up there and I was like, whoa, we're going for a train ride. You know, and again, that energy, right? It's those pieces that really drive it, even you Chuck, I think it was pretty good. So I just want to thank you for a great meeting and the presentations. It really just instills and continues to confirm what Ames is all about, and so a big thank you. Last on the agenda is assessment of the board meeting. Looking at, do we have any self-assessment, did we meet, it sounds like by comments, I think we had a pretty darn good meeting coming back from the summer and really taking those next steps. So I don't know if there's any further comments that anybody wants to make. Okay, with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion for adjournment.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Meeting adjourned.